All right, we are live. Welcome to the Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024, Litchfield School Board Meeting. Time is now 5:30 and we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, moving into our agenda this evening, we have review and revision of any agenda items, any changes to tonight's meeting. Okay, moving right into consent, any items off consent that the committee would like to talk about tonight? No? I did share a budget committee update in there with the link to the town budget files in case there's any interest. And again, the same you'll be covering for him tonight.
And I wrote, I filled in an update on the curriculum committee as well.
Okay. Excellent, thank you for that. We'll move into a summary of non-public action items from September 18th, 2024. Mr. Schumaker motioned to approve the August 21st, 2024 meeting minutes. Mr. Plansky seconded that motion, that motion carried 500. And we'll move quickly right into presentations and recognitions. And I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Yeah, so we have Principal Hess here. He had a crew, they all bailed on him.
Except one by default.
Except for one.
The other one's supposed to be coming, she just finished soccer practice, but we...
Poor Reagan.
And they're gonna give you, I applaud Mr. Hess and the staff up at CHS. They want to do open house a little bit differently. I know as a former high school principal, open house at the high school level, enthusiasm is not the same as at the elementary school level, so it can sometimes be a challenging night. So Jake and his staff have been working on doing kind of a different model with student exhibitions, so I thought we'd give you a little bit preview. CHS open house is tomorrow night, 6 to 8 o'clock. We have about 90 students who will be presenting over the course of the evening for representing most of the classes that we offer at CHS. So we're excited, hopefully this goes well, and it's something we can improve upon every year. This will be the first time we do it, so I'm sure there'll be some hiccups, but I really like the idea of having students talk about what they're learning. That's kind of what it's all about, so I'll turn it over to Jake.
Yeah, thanks. So last year, I tried to dabble and change things up a little bit, and the feedback from parents was, we still want time in the classrooms. We want to hear about courses and that sort of thing. So when I was thinking about it this year, I was like, okay, heard that loud and clear, but instead of teachers talking, let's give students that real-life presentation opportunity. Let's give them some ownership of what they learn and how they talk about it. So as a test run, I kind of just put it out there a couple of weeks ago and said, hey, ask student volunteers if they want to present for your class at open house. And over the past couple of weeks, they've been gathering students, we have 87 as our final total. And it's gonna look different across the school. So we're still gonna start with a 35-minute presentation in the auditorium to kick things off, where we'll meet the staff, we'll talk about our building goals and kind of what we want to do. And then they'll follow their schedules, their student schedules. But instead of just hearing from a teacher, they might hear from a teacher for a minute and then students. They might only hear from students. But really, kind of very broad this year is just, you know, some teachers were like, here's a script, this is what I want you to talk about. Some teachers are gonna talk about the competencies, and then students are gonna present what they're currently working on. So it's gonna vary a little bit, but the hope is that next year, we do two student exhibition nights where students just present on what they're currently doing in classes. And we're gonna try to connect them to our work-study practices. We're gonna be using some digital portfolio work. So I had a bunch of kids coming with me tonight. Reagan is the lone survivor, so Reagan, why don't you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Reagan. I'm in ninth grade at Campbell. And tomorrow at open house, I'm doing the open house for Mr. McDonough's Honors Website Design Class. We just finished our fall promotion project, which is where we design a website with codes that we learned on W3 schools. And we put that, we put a bunch of codes together to form our own website on, like, we could pick between the fall sports schedules, we could pick between spirit weeks, the Fall Fest, any of that. And me and my partner Lily, we put together the sports schedules with the spirit week, and we made a website that organized all of that for students to see.
I think one of the cool things about how Mr. McDonough presented with students is he'll start off the presentation, and there's six minutes, you get six minutes before you go to the next class. He's gonna start talking about the competencies, and then the students are gonna show their work. So it's like, here's what we're doing in class, and then the kids get to talk about their experience and that sort of thing. Some of the math classes, you know, I talked to the teachers, and you know, the kids are gonna do the whole shebang. They're gonna talk about the competencies, the course overviews, all that kind of stuff. Mr. Benoit's class, he told the kids, Ms. St. Jean as well, just kind of like, talk about your experience in this class and what we've done so far and what we're gonna do. So I think it's a real interesting way for us to kind of dip our toes in putting students out there, really taking ownership of what they're learning and how they're learning it. And then hopefully this will adapt as we move forward and really turn into some solid exhibitions where we'll open up to the entire community and just say, hey, walk through Campbell High School tonight for between this time, and meet kids in the hallways and in classrooms, and they're gonna explain to you what they learn at Campbell High School and how they learn it. So that's the direction we're going, you know, and I think that this will be a great kind of dipping our toe in the water to see kind of how things go.
Excellent. Reagan, great update.
Griller with some questions. And then if Lily shows up from soccer practice, we'll put her on the spot too, why not, so, great.
All right, unfortunately for you, you're stuck with mental health meetings, so sorry about that.
So again, so open house, 6 to 8 tomorrow, we're gonna start right at 6. Parents, please bring a copy of your student's schedule so you know where you're going, but we'll have some people to print schedules if not, so, thank you.
All right, excellent, thank you for that update. And then next up, we have Ms. Crowley on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, she's not here yet. We just reached out, she was bringing samples from the kitchen. She was making them fresh. Yeah, so we don't mind delaying that. She is en route with said samples, so we'll defer to that. We'll come back from that one.
She's learned.
Might be the Facebook post that I put up there, right?
We tell her every time, so.
And student rep report this evening?
Yeah, so we have two student reps, Nick and Danny. Danny's got a game tonight, so she's not gonna be here this evening. Nick is coming back from the student council field trip, so when he gets in here, I feel like everyone's coming back from something today. He can do his, but if you want to click, I don't want to speak for him on behalf, but we can wait, they updated their presentation and their work size for that, so, everyone's coming.
All right, all right. So we'll shift gears and go into community comment on agenda items. So this is the first of two public comment items. This particular agenda item is for items that are on our agenda specifically, and we ask that public comments are limited to three minutes per person. I'll now open it up for public comment, please.
I think I should get a name tag. First of all, I want to...
Just name an address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ron Blinis, 15 Revue Circle. First, I want to begin with an accommodation to the school board, superintendent, and teachers in general. As of last meeting night, went back and went through all the meeting minutes, trying to research elements on the LMS question that we brought up. But just going through the meeting minutes, the things that you cover and have covered and dealt with, it's astounding that, and the amount of effort that's undertaken. So I was overwhelmed when I was reading through, it took me, and I'm not done yet, about 15 hours to go through them. So translating into the effort that it took to actually do all that is amazing, so I just wanted to offer that observation. And so hopefully, as a follow-up to last week, I brought up, and I think Julie may be working on LMS, I'm interested in what you're finding there. I'm confused still, so I look forward to that. But my comment was focused on the power purchase agreement, I think that's the correct term. And last week, you mentioned that the payment for the buyout is in the CIP. And so a couple of questions, I looked and it appears that it's scheduled out over six years for a uniform amount, is that... So my question is, how are you going to do that? What's the mechanism to do that? And then I just saw the agenda tonight and was happy to see that there's a link to the signed agreement there, so I started to go through that. And my other question that I had had is, A, do we want to do that? What is the rationale for actually buying it out versus just continuing through the full lease? And a couple of points that I was questioning about is, if we buy it, then we have to maintain it. And the question comes is, you know, we've seen a lot of high failure rate with the installation to date, and is that a wise thing for us to do? Or just continue through and let the, if I read it correctly, the seller, which is the supplier, has to maintain it for 20 years? So my question is really that, and that's where I'll stop with, and...
So just, I can address those if that's okay with the board. So on the CIP, and having served on that committee, the idea for it being on a CIP is just for awareness and for the ability to track that we have this expense that's out there. The capital improvement committee decided to level fund it over the years, so at the end of that five-year, six-year period, right, we would have enough in our accounts to then make the full buyout payment.
And what would the process of that be? Because we've talked about...
The process of that is a warrant article in March to the voters to raise and appropriate that funding.
For an annual?
Annual fee of 150, whatever it is, yeah.
Okay, well, that's interesting, because that'd be interesting, we could apply that to the FIC discussion, if that's possible, then.
I mean, anything, you can certainly, that's possible through warrant to the town, yes, in March. To answer your question on, well, is it worth buying out? I mean, that's obviously a discussion to be held at a later date, right? But I would point you to, what page is this? I'm on page three of the original contract, and it goes through in a table, years 1 through 22, of all the payment schedules.
I saw that, yeah.
And what you'll note that is really beginning in year seven, right? So after the six years of ownership, it's a flat fee that's budgeted for of 97, but in year seven, it goes up to 114, and then gradually goes up to 100, nearly 180,000.
How much?
180,000.
Eighty, okay.
Right, so it nearly doubles over that balance of the term.
That's what we need to pay?
That's what we would need to pay each year. And so the idea is, well, now that we're doubling ultimately the payment gradually over the balance of that 13 years, return on investment, is it worth buying it out and saving all that extra money?
Okay. So as is the ways, I'll, you're not to talk about it immediately, but the idea of, okay, is it something we want to still have to maintain? Because, you know, solar panels are typically 20 years old and last sometimes, and the batteries sometimes don't last 20 years, so.
We could look at the average life cycle of them, and then look at the ROI at that point. But it's on the capital improvement mainly because it's a placeholder in the event that we want to ask the townspeople to start to raise and appropriate funding for that purpose, and then is that the intended purpose at the end of year six?
And one last observation, then, the fair market value gets determined at the, right at the point of buyout, if I understand. So the 600,000, at this point's a placeholder, because the seller actually gets to determine the fair market value, is that right?
Yes, but I think that's in the contract. I'd have to go back and look at the exact...
I think so, yeah.
Yeah.
The reason I bring it up is the first estimate was 375,000 for the buyout, and now it's 6.
Yeah, and that begs the question, we're gonna get into this a little bit later this evening about the change in the battery storage and the scope of that. Does that increase the buyout value now, because that's superior to what was scoped? Like, all of that goes into this.
Okay, I'll stop there, but I appreciate, thank you.
Yep, no, thank you. Any additional public comment this evening? Okay, we will close community comment at this point. There is a second round of community comment towards the end of our meeting tonight before we move into non-public. I'll turn it over to, oh, Mrs. Crowley's here.
I was waiting for the paninis to toast, and I thought I had a minute more time, so I apologize. I'm gonna hand out samples first.
That's okay.
These are, I know, right? These are the famous cheddar, turkey, bacon, apple, pickled apple, paninis.
Thank you.
Fuji, hold on, there's more.
I like your Litchfield school.
Thank you, yes, it's very nice using the wonderful...
Opening day?
Getting to work.
I have some more, if you guys want to pass them around, how about it?
I have samples.
Didn't know you were gonna get fed coming to the...
Okay, wait, we have more cool things, and then I'll get into it. There's gonna be a lot of crinkling, I apologize people at home, so, crinkle now or forever hold your peace.
These are some new bars that we're testing. You're welcome, from our Zeez's company.
It's like my birthday.
Zeez's, okay. Well, you said you wanted it.
Shouldn't have had fritos, I got dinner coming, who knew?
I brought 10 of everything, so. And this is, you can ask anybody I work with, I won't shut up about this product. This is, and I'll go into this later, this is a shelf-stable yogurt that I'm looking into, which is super exciting, it is gluten-free, not free, I have strawberry and vanilla.
And not refrigerated.
That makes me go.
Not refrigerated. No, no, I know, I know, it's weird, but it's really, really good. It tastes like, flavor-wise, it tastes like a yogurt. I gave you some of it?
You did, thank you.
However, when you eat it, it tastes like you're eating vanilla or strawberry pudding. It's really good, so I figured when it comes down to like, yogurt dates are always kind of wonky, school vacations, stuff like that, and you don't want to risk throwing out, sorry. It's a hot mouse, it's fine. And... Throwing them in the audience, like, should have brought like a potato cannon. Okay, hi. So I'm just gonna present a quick little update for you, it will be quick. I don't have a ton of data right now, we are still very new into the school year, but I do have some very exciting things to try and update you on. So everyone sets goals for themselves, you know, I know the board and the district have worked together about setting some goals. I set my own personally, because I love to compete against what I can do better. So this year, some of my goals are to creatively incorporate commodity food items that we have a lot of, to lower, ultimately lower the plate costs, and efficiently utilize the existing inventory. So a lot of these recipes, that I'll explain in a few minutes, come because I have what's called menu block, and I genuinely am like, I don't know what to do. I have like 12 cases of deli turkey, besides sandwiches, what do you do with deli turkey? So I literally go into the website and I go, what do you do with deli turkey? And it spits out these fantastic paninis, and I went, oh, that looks good, and then I throw it on the menu to see what, so, see what happens. We've done that with a couple other things as well. So that leads into introducing new recipes and products at all the schools that do comply with the current nutrition regulations and what's to come. So the yogurt in front of you does meet the new regulations when it comes to added sugars, which is gonna be implemented a few years down the line, which is super fun and great, because obviously it affects yogurt, because why wouldn't it? So that's exciting. And then that leads into exploring these kinds of strategies to optimize our food budget while minimizing waste. And ultimately, if we do all of that correct, it would increase our participation at all of the schools at both breakfast and lunch. A lot of the Zeez's items that I'm gonna show on my slides do great for both breakfast and lunch, and actually à la carte snacks. And we are hiring, fun, yay. We have a couple positions available, so if anyone's looking for a fun little job to have, come, give me a buzz. We are a good time to work for. So these are the new menu items that I kind of have been featuring. We started them up at the high school, it is kind of hard to see, I apologize, but the one on the left is a Sweet and Sour Power Bowl, and that comes with chicken, it originally is with tofu, but I changed it to chicken, sweet potatoes, brown rice, and broccoli. In the middle, you have the Cheeseburger Blast Unwrap, which came from literally me going, I'm drowning in ground beef, what else do I do besides tacos? And it came up with that, and basically, it's just all of your favorite cheeseburger toppings in a wrap. And then obviously, the turkey, the turkey-apple panini that you see and have in front of you. Priced out per cost, just to give the board an idea of kind of why we're utilizing these items. In these featured recipes alone, we have commodity chicken, we have commodity rice, we have commodity beef, commodity turkey, and commodity cheddar. And that's the price per whatever that is. So the Sweet and Sour Power Bowl, including the bowl, is $1.75 per cost, per serving. The Cheeseburger Blast Unwrap is $1.42 per wrap with all of the stuff included, and the sandwich alone is $1.07, so the peppers and all the other add-ons, I kind of budget for like 50 cents and under for produce, kind of, you know, just a general cost for produce, but that all encompasses into the meal. But to make the sandwich alone, it costs $1.07 in product.
It's delicious.
Thank you. I have to tell you, I'm gonna be very, I know, it's very good. Which is why I was like, this is gonna be great. So a new thing we did, especially with the panini, was we made a bunch of them up the day before we were to serve it, because let's face it, pickled apples are kind of weird. Like, you hear pickled apples and you go, ooh. I didn't, I went, ooh, that sounds delicious, let's do it. So we actually made a bunch of the paninis first, cut them into tiny little pieces and put them in little two-ounce cups. So every kid that came through the line, whether they were getting hot lunch, they were getting snacks, whatever they wanted, they could get a sample of the day, we called it like the try-it-before-you-buy-it kind of situation. And I think that was really success, helping our success in this product, because otherwise, I think people would hear and go, mm-mm. Not for me, but then when they try it and you get the little bit of sweet and the little bit of tangy, and it's just, it works, it just works really well. So I think that was very successful, and that's something I'm hoping to implement down the line. A little bit more. I literally ran around with a tray going, try this. Like, I found a student in the hallway who I know, and I went, here, try this, and I just shoved it in his face, and he was like, okay.
I'm just like a high school kid where like, I would never have tried this, like, it was just on the menu. But Lauren's like, here, 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 have this little sample, it's like, okay, I can stomach like...
I'm very, very persistent about it. Joe Underwood, I'm gonna use him as an example, I literally went, here, try this, and he went, just eat it, and he was like, oh, that was actually really good, so, because it was weird.
Wanting us to try these now, by the way?
Please, please.
I mean, because now you've got me like, really.
So, and I did kind of, I do kind of use the high school as like, my, I'm gonna say guinea pigs for lack of a better term, in terms of taste testing, and we will bring this, this is actually gonna be on the October menu with the pickled apples at the high school, but the other schools are gonna get without the pickled apples, but they're still gonna get the panini, and we get the bread just like that. It's a whole-grain panini bread, pre-marked, all that stuff, so that'll be coming on too, and it's a great way to use up some commodity items. So the other part again, like I said, bringing in some new items. So like I said, I mentioned about the, I tried the yogurt at our annual national conference in Boston in July, and I have been kind of obsessed with it ever since. It's kind of mind-boggling, but it's really, really good. So we ordered some for the district, and along with that, I ordered some other new products. This should last us a good amount of time for the school year. Again, just to kind of reinvigorate, shake things up a little bit. So we have, up in the top left, we have different flavors of apple sauces that Zeez's makes. Featured are peach mango, birthday cake, you'll notice birthday cake is in like Three Things, because I like it, it's my favorite flavor. I'm a child, and it's fine. Wild watermelon is very good, and the pink lemonade applesauce, also very, very good. Along with dried fruit, we have regular raisins. In the middle, we have a sour strawberry raisin, and then on the end, we have, it's called Mixies, and it's cranberries, raisins, apples, pineapple. I'm sure there's something else I'm missing, but it's a whole bunch of mixed dried fruit in the package. In the middle there, we have our breakfast bars, which are kind of the bigger portion of what you guys have in front of you, and we ordered the berry apple crisp, which is the flavor you all have. Again, the birthday cake, we got campfire smores, and then there's a cocoa bar on the side. In the lower left, we have two flavors of graham crackers that we plan to put in the yogurt meals, so those are French toast and, again, birthday cake. They are gonna be featured at the other schools too, in like the snack shacks. Top right, we have two hummus cups that are available as well that we ordered, so each school got a case, and there's red pepper and regular hummus, and then of course, the yogurt, the shelf-stable yogurt.
How does the, how does the pricing compare on this shelf-stable yogurt versus...
So it is a little bit more expensive, but my thought process behind it was, again, we're not gonna be throwing it away, it's shelf-stable for a year, so if it comes down to, I'm thinking, emergency feedings, it's coming down to, you know, the freezer went down over Christmas break, and now we have nothing to feed the kids, kind of a thing. It's more of an, it's not an everyday product. This is a, we bought it, it's an emergency thing, and then as the year progresses, we will start to use it more and more instead of buying more and more. But that's like May-June kind of a thing. I wanted to see how it would go, so I just bought, like I said, a limited amount for the year to see how it would go and see what the kids thought of it, but it's not an everyday. I've already aggressively told my staff, like, you're not to put this out all the time. This is, literally, we came back from, like, we have two weeks off at Christmas, that was my thinking. Instead of trying to gamble with, you know, $80 to $100 worth of yogurt that I would ultimately have to throw away if it expired, we have this just in the back, you know, and we can pop it out. It's not too much more than the actual yogurt, but it is...
Do we track how much we're throwing away, like, or the...
We do, yeah, yeah. Typically with the yogurt meals, we don't have an issue. And what I'm also trying to do with that waste, you know, trying to less waste, if the yogurt is set to like expire at the elementary school, we actually freeze it before it goes, and then you can pop it out, and we use it in smoothies and stuff, and it holds really well in the smoothies, so. We do a lot of that kind, we're trying a lot of like, I'm gonna say cutting corners with waste, that's not what I mean, but...
Sustainability.
Thank you, sustainability, thank you for having my back on that, because I clearly used the wrong word, so.
So do you already provide things like a breakfast bar, applesauce, the raisins?
We do.
So what, what's the draw with this particular company?
They're, I mean, they're fun, their products are really, really good. I think out of all of the vendors that I've seen, whether at trade shows or even on our own bid, because some of the stuff is on our own bid, they have the most appealing packaging, number one. It's bright, it's colorful, it's fun, they have the cute little critters on them. They have the most unique flavors, and they have a very diverse flavor. This is just a sample of what I bought, because I was so overwhelmed with all the other things that come onto it. They have so many more products than just this alone as well. So they have like sunflower seeds, and they have, oh gosh, like half-pot popcorn, roasted chickpeas, all these other different things. So they have a wide range of flavors and products that I think it brings a lot of diversity into a menu. And again, the flavors, I mean, the standard flavors we have are the standard flavors. These are kind of a little bit more unique and fun. And everything is shelf-stable, which is great, and individually wrapped. All right, so, I mean, I can't not give you numbers, so we're gonna give you some numbers. This is just a quick comparison from August 20, August and September 2023 to this September in August. Basically, overall, breakfast did go up, which is very exciting. We're averaging about 88.3 breakfasts a day, and these are just value breakfasts, which are the ones that we get reimbursed for with the state. The lunches did drop a little bit, but I'm not worried, because August and September are always really wonky. We have a whole new grade at each building that kind of is just getting used to the whole surrounding, whether you're a freshman or you're at kindergarten, and the kindergarten kids, bless them, they're always kind of, you know, afraid to eat with us at first. I anticipate that to climb around Halloween is usually when we see that turn and it starts to go. These are very standard counts and numbers, and it didn't drop significantly, 500 lunches. Obviously, we would rather them be up, but I'm not overly concerned about that at this point in time. Thank you.
I just want to say, you're exceptional at what you do, I mean...
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Last year, we're faced with a lot of criticism over the budget. You've come, you've very clearly put a lot of thought into how you could personally help us address that, and I very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
I mean, this is above and beyond figuring out solutions, which I think makes a big difference. You create, I mean, the food you make is fantastic.
Thank you.
And I think it reflects with the kids.
I can't take all the credit, my staff do a really great job, and they're on board with my crazy schemes when I come to them and I say things like, hey, you know, it's April Fool's Day on Monday, let's make meatloaf cupcakes, and they're like, okay, and they just kind of deal with it. So I can't take all, but I appreciate, I do appreciate that, and I know it's a bigger picture.
I mean this for you and all of your staff, but I mean, your test kitchen is obviously doing something great. It's, you know, obviously, I don't know that people really know this, but, you know, when... It's, you know, obviously I don't know that people really know this, but uh, you know, when we're talking about cost for lunch. The, the more people we have buying lunch, the cheaper it actually is for us. And so, so getting more people to wanna buy lunch is actually more economical for the district.
Absolutely. Agree.
And, and I know you brought that up and you've been clearly trying to find a way to do.
Trying very hard. It all, like I said, it also comes to the fact that I, you only have an allot, a certain allotment. And certain items you can buy on commodity. And at some points, I'm literally going, I have all of the district's ham in my freezer. What am I gonna do with all of this? Like, besides this? And that's where I'm trying very hard. Also, I get bored super easily, especially with food. I, I need to constantly mix it up. And we've done seven years of the same stuff. Let's try to change it a little bit and throw something different in there. And it gets kids really excited about it.
And to, to the best that you can tell, I know you evaluated it at the end of last year. We did have to raise the prices and, you know, last year we did.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes. I'm sorry.
And it doesn't seem to have drastically impacted.
No. Um, even those families that were kind of on the cusp, I did actually have a separate like tracking thing for them. And I did track them, their purchases kind of monthly for value meals and stuff. And I only know this because one of them was my neighbor and she was just like, it's just gonna affect our personal budget. It just is what it is. But for the most part, none of it really changed, even with those kinds of on the fence people. So. I was, I was pleased with that, which is, which is very good. And no one seemed to, no one said anything as of right now. So. Oh, and we opened the deli the other day. Sorry, I forgot that part. We opened the deli at the high school. Um, because we're very shorthanded, so we're only doing it Tuesdays and Thursdays. But the kids were very excited that the deli was open.
How many positions are you?
Um, so overall, two, um, that I'm looking to hire for.
This is tasty.
Good, right?
I, I ate everything you brought and it was. Like, my wife's not gonna be happy though, cause I didn't eat dinner before.
Sorry, sorry Shannon.
I'll be hungry.
One last thing I can, I just wanna talk about with food service while Lauren is here. So we had our um, regional superintendent's meeting a couple of weeks ago. And, and one of the main talking points was what to do about the fact that the vast majority of districts are in the red when it comes to their food service budget. And, and is there some different approach that we can all kind of take to address that? Whether that's something uh, and, and working with the state, like how can, how can we address this in some sort of system? You know, we're relying on those free and reduced numbers, but that's a really hard number at times, you know, because um, families are prideful and they don't necessarily, even though that's a confidential process, that it's hard for, for families to admit that they might need, need that support. Um, so that's gonna be a talking point, I think, at the state level is, is how to handle the, the, that situation. Schools are losing money on the, on their lunch, on, and food service.
My understanding too is the free and reduced lunch threshold, the income threshold is very, very, very low.
It's ridiculous.
And so people who, you know, aren't under that threshold, but still really can't afford school lunches, it's, it's a really tough thing. So.
And I get very upset about it, cause obviously like I want to feed the kids. That's the whole point of my job. Um, we had, and it's, but it's black and white. And there's, I, like, if there was even a range would be so helpful. We had a family that was within twelve dollars and they didn't qualify. Twelve. I was like, are you, like, come on.
There have been deals in the, uh, in the legislature to, to increase it.
And I'm hoping that momentum continues. And I think there's a lot of support from a lot of different areas in the state to do that. So I'm hopeful for it.
And if you're looking for any information, I'm gonna plug this, even though it's not really anything to do with much. But um, last week tonight with John Oliver, I'm not a big watcher of the show, but he did an episode on school lunches. And if you take out, obviously it's HBO, so you know, language. Um, but if you look at just the information he presents, it's a really, really great info about what directors and stuff have to do. I think they talked to a chef and they said, you know, we only have after costs of like labor and all this other stuff. We only have like a buck twenty-five to feed the kids. And how do you do that promoting fresh fruit and vegetable? And all these other nutrition guidelines that we have to adhere to. And it's just kind of, it's crazy, but it's very informative. Aside from all the other hoopla that goes in with it. But I mean, that also makes it fun too. So.
Alright, well, thank you again.
Thank you so much for having me. Sorry I was late, but I hope you enjoyed it. Have a great night.
Lauren, what do we owe you?
Just your love and support.
I'll just add it into my kids' account.
Alright, excellent. Um, well, we'll move into correspondence at this point.
Ready to go. On September nineteenth, Jan Sullivan, our secretary circulated draft minutes from um, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. On September twenty-third, Mr. Schumaker emailed the board advising of a concern of an FIC member regarding the Turner report. And there were responses on that email from Mr. Cutter. Bob Leary, the superintendent, Dan DeWitt, Denise McHugh, and the superintendent again. On September twenty-third, the superintendent um, emailed the board that there was a tentative agreement reached between first student and the drivers. Um, and then a secondary topic came up in that email regarding an upcoming meeting with Dynamic Grid regarding the solar array and battery. And questions about the timeline. Um, and there were responses from Mr. Cutter and the superintendent on that email. On September twenty-fourth, the superintendent uh, sent a text message to the board advising of a medical incident at LMS. On September twenty-fourth, Christina Harrison texts, sent a text message to the board regarding a job fair at the Mollina Hampshire on October fifth. And soliciting board thoughts on manning a table with information on available open positions in the district. On September twenty-seventh, Renee Burgess emailed the board circulating the draft agenda for tonight's meeting. On September twenty-seventh, Anne Inomoradi emailed the board circulating the manifest that is going around tonight's meeting. And there were responses from Mr. Cutter, superintendent, Mr. Cutter, and superintendent. On September twenty-seventh, um, the superintendent emailed the board, I'm sorry, sent a text message to the board advising of a brief secure campus at Campbell High School. On September thirtieth, Christina Harrison sent a text message to the board that she is happy to answer any lingering questions on the CHS music trip to Universal in February. On October first, Jan Sullivan um, circulated links um, to the nine eighteen twenty twenty-four draft minutes. Both public and non-public. October first, the superintendent sent a text message to the board advising of a secure campus due to a medical issue at CHS.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Thank you. Alright, we'll close our correspondence and move into general business and turn it over to the superintendent for his update.
Yep. Uh, so first thing, it's October second, so October first, we have to do enrollment for the state. Uh, so if you wanna click there, um, you'll see since our last meeting, uh, the end of the month is usually when we do it. So we just continue to do that, September twenty-seventh. And uh, lo and behold, the numbers are the same on October first, so they're the same enrollment. Um, from where we are at the beginning of the year, overall, we went from the district perspective, we did go up a student. Um, each school had slightly, a little bit more movement. Um, these numbers obviously will fluctuate slightly throughout the school year as we have kids come and go. Uh, we received a call yesterday about um, family thinking of moving in. They have three kids, so that would go up by three. We have another situation where we could have a couple of kids leave, so that would go down by two. So we'll probably be around this number um, up and down, you know, throughout the whole year. But that's where we are and that's what we'll submit to the state for our uh, October first enrollment. Then we use this enrollment to do enrollment projections for the budget process that will come up when we get to that. Um, we have those, uh, that projection ready to go um, as we develop our budget here. So.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions on enrollment? That'll be a key report to share with the budget committee as well. Alright, capital needs.
Yeah, keep going. Alright. So uh, last meeting, we had our public hearing about pursuing some work with onsite insight. Uh, so I was able to call them, set up uh, appointments. Um, so they did, were fully booked for, they do their uh, visits during the first week of a month. So they were booked for October already. So they're gonna come the first week in November. So they'll be here on November sixth, seventh, and eighth in the district. They'll do GMS on the sixth, CHS on the seventh, LMS on the eighth. And then it takes about three to four weeks uh, for them to do um, their written report once they come in and done the, done their work here and everything they're going through. So my hope is to have that for the December fourth board meeting. She said she only needs, the lady I was, I was speaking to, a wonderful um, lady um, who was working for them, said they only need three weeks. But we got Thanksgiving in there. I wanna give them four, so I'm hoping we have it there for that December fourth um, board meeting. Um, but everything seems to be going as planned. They need a few things from us, uh, such as blueprints and stuff like that. So they're prepared and and some maps of the school and everything. But that's kind of proceeding forward um, as we plan and stuff. So, okay.
So November fifth, sixth, seventh?
Six, seven, and eight. Yep.
Six, seven, and eight. Is that when they come out and do their, like, their full investigation of? Okay.
Yep. That's when they'll be onsite doing all that. So I mean, we'll have minimal interruptions. We have school on those days, right? So we might pop into, well, we'll be probably in every classroom at some point as we're kind of going through and um, doing some things. But, you know, we have all sorts. We did health inspections earlier. We got the state facility thing at some point this year. I feel like people are gonna get used to us kind of popping around schools looking at stuff. So I don't think it'll be anything too out of the ordinary.
Did they say how long, like how long each day it's gonna take them?
They said take most of the day. Like, yeah, yeah. Um, you know, she's scheduled one building a day. And she's like, I'm gonna get there at eight and I'm gonna go until I'm done. So it's like, sounds good. I'm ready. Clear my schedule. So.
Well, thank you for that update. I think the only thing is just timeline concerns, right? That's pushing it very close to when we need to make decisions on warrants and things like that. So, yeah, just something to keep a pulse on.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, then we have the pay for athletic officials.
Yeah, so this was something that, that we did correspond with in those emails. It was a question that came up in the manifest. So um, uh, you know, Chair Cutter, I know you, you wanted some more detail. I don't know, I can talk an overview for everybody and then we can answer questions. I, I don't.
So I think just as the background, right, one of the items that came up in manifest review was a payment to a vendor uh, for, how do you pronounce it?
Arbiter.
Arbiter, thank you. Uh, for arbiter. And there was a question about not recognizing that vendor, what's it for, right? And the, and the correspondence was about, it's a new service, right? It's a way to streamline how we pay our game officials, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um, I think all that makes sense. I think from, from my perspective. Uh, one of the concerns I have is we're taking on a new service that didn't go through the budget process.
As soon as you said, like, can you put this on the agenda? I was like, ah, I screwed that up. I should have brought this. I apologize. Like, I, I anticipated this, right?
Man, it's a new service that didn't go through the budget process, right? I'm not debating if it's value add. It sounds like it is with simplify. I get all that. Um, it's just a new service and we haven't, we haven't talked about it as a board or approved it as a board. And nor the budget committee had any awareness of this.
Yeah. I apologize, I own that completely. I think um, it's a simple thing. It's a very minimal fee to use this. And pretty much every high school in the state uses it. So when Tony was like, hey, what do you think about this? I was like, great, let's do it. It'll make everything easier for everybody. Uh, very simple thing. But then, you know, I didn't think anything more of it just a month or two ago. And then as soon as you said that in the email, I was like, yep, yep, you're right. Like, I should have brought this for, because it is something we would, we wanna move, kind of moving forward and stuff. So I apologize for that.
No, look, I mean, it happens, right? You're, everyone's learning here. But I think my only concern with this now is it feels like, and correct me if I'm wrong. It feels like we're double paying to an extent game officials for the year.
Yeah, so we're not doing that. So I can clarify that and help that. So essentially, what the, for people who aren't familiar with Arbiter Pay is uh, is what is called for in, in the athletic industry. So they're a company that um, we essentially send our official fee money towards. So like the, the deposit we made with them is, is ten thousand dollars. That's what you're seeing in the manifest when you see it. And so they held on to that money for us. And then our officials get paid through arbiter. So with the vast majority of high schools using this, and we have officials who are at multiple schools over the course of a week or two weeks. They're all getting essentially one payment from arbitrator for all the games they're doing over a time span. And it's direct deposited into their accounts, um, just like we would direct, direct depositing for our paychecks and for everything like this. So it cuts down on us having to show you stand W nines for people, uh, for us having to issue hundreds of individual checks or cash directly to officials. For officials not to deposit checks and then us having to reissue it or some damage happening or something like that. It streamlines the whole process for this. So we're not paying officials twice, so they don't get a check from us and for arbiter. They sign up and the vast majority officials want to use arbiter. They sign up to use arbiter and then that's how they get paid, period.
But we're also paying, I guess the concern is we're also paying game officials directly in addition to this new service right now.
Some of the ones that didn't sign up.
Correct. So we're doing that both ways. But we're not double paying an official, right? So if like, we have two officials for a game and one official is doing it through arbiter. And say the fee for the game is seventy-five dollars for each official, seventy-five is gonna go through arbiter to that official. And the seventy-five dollar check is gonna go to the official who doesn't wanna use arbiter. So we're still paying out a hundred and fifty for the game. Regardless of what system we're using to pay it out for, if that makes sense. Yeah. I, I, I don't wanna speak for NHIDA, but they're like pushing this for everybody to use to streamline this entire process for officiating.
Again, I'm not discounting it's a great idea. I think it just.
And I apologize, I will.
And the other, the other thing is given the amount of ten thousand dollars, right? We have our purchasing policies with, with the parameters behind this, like are there other companies that offer this service? Like, did we go up to bid for it?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. So we're not paying them that ten thousand dollars. They're just like holding the money for us, if that makes sense. So like the fee we're paying for them is sixteen hundred dollars, that's it. So like, we're not paying this extraordinary amount of fee for them to provide this service for us. So I, we're not paying them tens of thousands of dollars or anything like that. It's instead of it like essentially sitting in our bank account, it's sitting in their account and then getting paid from there.
And if we don't use it all, do we get it back?
Yes, we get it back. Yeah.
Alright, anything else in this one? Alright, hearing on, thank you for that update.
Yeah.
Um, LMS safety and word choices.
Yeah, so we had a presentation uh, last night. Um, I would say, you know, typical for, for middle school age students is word choices can be challenging sometimes and, and kids are learning, um, you know, how to handle themselves in social situations. How to handle their emotions if they're upset or they're trying to be cool around their peers or, or something along those lines. And that has certainly led to some of our students at LMS making kind of poor word choices in, in some of their actions and stuff. Um, whether that be to appear, you know, um, like during lunch or something like that. Or via text message or social media in the after-school hours or something like that. Um, you know, so Principal Grantham um, hosted a, a family forum last night where we talked about safety and word choices and, and um, those type of messages. Uh, we had some families attend last night, which was great. Thank you for those who, who could attend. Um, Jen followed that up this morning with a message out to uh, our middle school families with, with the presentation and everything. So I wanna make the board, the board aware of that presentation, say it's a positive thing. I think we're gonna follow this up, this messaging throughout the year. Uh, with other forums, you know, maybe on a quarterly basis or, or a more consistent basis with families. Uh, we got some good feedback from families about, hey, this was great. Like maybe this can be done, you know, at the very, very beginning of the year. Because I think families come from different, um, like we talked about phones in that context. And families have very wildly different rules on, on phone access. You know, some students don't get phones till they're in eighth grade. Other students may get that at, at a younger grade. Some may have, not have access to it at night. Others may pull, charge it in their room. They're just all over the place. And um, just kind of educating uh, families on what we see from, from a, a school adult perspective when it comes to use of language and, and phones. So I thought that Jen did a wonderful job. We partnered with uh, Litchfield Police. Um, you know, Chief was there last night and, and George, our SRO. Um, were part of the presentation last night. And uh, it went well and we're hoping to do more in the future and, and have more people attend. So. Just wanna provide that up to.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you for Principal Grantham for facilitating and kind of leading that discussion last night.
It's an important conversation.
Alright, uh, shifting gears, uh, we have our student representative with us tonight. Welcome. How was school today?
It was good.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Alright. You are up for a student rep report tonight.
Is it gonna show what I just? Uh, so we have some past activities. Campbell's twenty-fifth birthday just happened. Uh, we had the homecoming dance. We had the pep rally and we had the spirit week. For the days, Monday was red, white, and blue day. Tuesday was anything but a backpack date. Uh, Wednesday was jersey day. Thursday was famous duo day and Friday was Campbell color day. Uh, I wish I could show you. I have like pictures of like people dressed up and stuff, but we don't.
Oh, we do have it up. There it is.
There is uh, what's currently happening is there's a CHS open house happening. Uh, the Fall Central District Council Student Meeting happened today. That's where I was. And then the Bring Change to Mind Committee is also meeting. Uh, some future activities, the senior trick or treats coming up. Uh, the Make a Difference Food Drive is also coming up. Uh, the Waterville Valley Student Council Conference Trips coming up in a few weeks. And the uh, New Hampshire Association of Student Council Winter Central District Student Council Conference is also coming up. So that's exciting. And then uh, focusing on like academics and stuff like that, uh, we have the Students Against Strut of Decisions Meeting coming up. We have the King, the Campbell Academic Leaders Meeting coming up. Uh, and applications for the Social Studies National Honor Society are now open, as well as for applications for the Science National Honor Society. And AP Biology just had a, a project where the students made election campaigns for organelles. And the plasma, the plasma membrane won the election.
Exciting. So.
Real exciting.
Go plasma.
Alright, cool. Thank you for that update. Excellent. Okay, so shifting gears once again, uh, over to Ms. Darling for our business administration update tonight.
Um, well, as far as the financials I have attached this month, um, there isn't anything too out of the ordinary. Um, things um, are going well. Um, as far as transfers go, um, I had those um, attached as well. We didn't have any. Things, um, are going well. Um, as far as transfers go, um, I had those, um, attached as well. We didn't have anything significant there.
Some belt we already approved, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so that's good.
Um, so we did include that. And then, um, as far as the, the solar update, um, Brian and I did, um, meet with Kay Aiken from Dynamic Grid over at LMS uh, last week. Uh, it was the first time I got on the roof to actually see the solar panels. That was interesting.
Exciting getting up there, right?
I get some students yelling up to Superintendent O'Connell.
Good thing.
Yes, exactly.
Watch your head, alright, no entry.
Uh, so essentially, um, you know, we were trying to drill down on some dates, um, with Kay, um, which was a little bit challenging to get, um, you know, an exact date in mind, but we, she did, um, say that she was thinking that, um, by November, the first week of November, she thought that the relay and control panel, which are the two things that still need to be installed inside the building, um, that would be the days, that, that would be the timeframe that those would be installed.
When was that? Early November?
So she said the first week of November was the date that she gave us. And then once that happens, there's some testing the Dynamic Grid is gonna have to do and then after they're completed their testing, the utility company will have to come in and do their testing as well. As far as the battery piece of it, that was a little harder to kind of get a timeframe, but the best that we could get was spring of next year, which is clearly, you know, all of this is much later than we had, um, hoped. So Brian's been in touch with, um, our attorney, Diane Goro, and she looked over the agreement, um, the original agreement as well as the amendment that we had from December of twenty twenty-three. And, you know, wondered, I, I don't know how, what we have for legal remedies at this point, but it's certainly something that we can look more into. I know Brian's been talking.
Yeah, so I've been talking with Diane and, you know, they're way past what the, the original deadline and then the addendum deadline was. Um, so the, you know, talking with Kay, she did say, you know, in order for them to proceed with the thing that needs to be done by the first week of November, that we have to move this telephone wiring. So talked with Chris, uh, Jim Rogar, tech guy, and, you know, he's had this on the docket. Um, he's reached out to the people who do that, which is telephone and, and network technologies for us to do that. They have us on their schedule. That's supposed to be literally any day at this point. And as soon as that happens, which is the last thing we can control in this process, I would like to get harder dates out of Kay, um, rather than just like, hey, first week in November. She was hesitant to give us that date. I said, look, I have onsite insight coming here. I would like this done before they're here, so when they're doing this assessment of the building, we know what we're working with here. You know, that's the idea behind all this. So she did relent and say she could get it done by November if, if we got this, this telephone stuff in place. But the battery is clearly her storage, pardon me. The storage is clearly past date, you know, and, and talking with Diane, we can, you know, start to, I, I guess the best way to say a little bit more aggressive through our attorneys and pursue that action if that's the board's leisure. To try and, and put a little more pressure to get this done because we need to get this done to see if it works and like to see if this is worth all of this at this point. So, you know, i- if that's the board's leisure, I, I would like to do that. Once we get our stuff taken care of when it comes to this telephone wiring thing that needs to be moved, is get hard deadlines and then hold, hold Dynamic Grid to these, these dates so we can get this done and over with.
So are we, because of these delays, these continued delays, are we, are we seeing, um, you know, is this affecting our finances? Because my understanding is that they're still, they're, you know, they're taking the hit for us. We're still paying the amount that we s- we budgeted and what we said we would be paying. Um, and we wouldn't be paying less at this point because, because of the PPA.
So from a financial standpoint, it's a great question. From a financial standpoint, we're not taking a hit at this point, right? Like, and speaking of, you know, Ron mentioned the question with the six years. We've talked about that a lot. That doesn't kick in until all this is done. That's clear in the, in the contract that that clock doesn't start. What I think the frustration is, is like, this needs to get done. We need to move on with kinda life here. This was supposed to be done, it looks like, from two years ago from that original contract. We need to see this in action. We need to start, we have other work we need to do in this district. We need to wrap this up and we need to move forward from, from a facility standpoint. And the longer this goes, it becomes a frustration point for the board, for administration, for the community, and that's not helpful for anything we're trying to build. You know, anything in a positive direction, whatever we're gonna do next. So this needs to be wrapped up. And like, so are we taking a hit financially? No. Are we taking a hit from at least a public relations or from, uh, just like trust or comfort level or any of that? Like, yeah, we are. We need to get this going. Like, we, we asked for this to be done. It's not done. The addendum said the end of summer break, which wasn't a hard date, but we've clearly passed the end of summer break. We are in school. Like, we need, we need some more concrete stuff. And then, you know, we're asked for, well, I don't wanna commit to this. I gotta talk to Diane some more, but, you know, in my head, I think, you know, we put hard dates and then ask for financial compensation if they're not getting met, you know, because of that aggravation. Now, how do we arrive at a dollar that, that people, that makes sense in that? I'm not a hundred percent sure. That's why we work with our attorneys and look into options that we have. But it's hurting us from, from that district standpoint and the trust we're trying to build with communities, so.
So, a couple of suggestions. I think number one, we don't have, you know, financial impacts as of right now, but if there are any other impacts, please take note of them, um, for the attorney because they're gonna need that information. Specifically, if we're gonna be asking for more money, we have to be able to say we're sustaining some sort of damage here. Obviously, this shouldn't be going on this long anyways. My suggestion would be if Kay has committed to a, a week, which is four weeks away, I would follow up as soon as Chris confirms that we have the telephone thing done and immediately follow up with Kay.
Yeah, that's.
Um, and at that point, confirm a date. If Kay does not confirm a date at that point, I would just start every, so however often you think, just following up. And then if Kay does not deliver by the first week of November, then I think that's the point at which we should be talking to our council. I don't wanna incur legal costs right now. I don't think it's worth us incurring additional legal costs right now when I don't think there's a whole lot that's gonna change between now and the first week of November. I'll try and keep my cool.
No, I ju- I think maybe we should have, I, I don't know what the rest of the board feels like. I know we don't love non-public, but my concern is we're getting into legal conversations and Kay could be watching this very conversation right now and I'd like to be able to say comments that
Yeah.
I don't necessarily want them to hear.
I'm not gonna go beyond what I just said.
No, I know, I know. And that's why I'm saying, I want, I do think we need to talk about legal remedies because I was going to say that I do think there have been financial implications and I'll get into those, but I don't wanna do it with her watching, so. Can we move this to non-public?
We can. We will continue this conversation in non-public. I think just while in public before we close it.
Yeah.
We had a handshake between Kay and I, right? I was actively there, following up, texting, you know, regular communications while you were onboarding, all of this. Kay committed to these timelines. We put the new agreement, they had addendum in place because I forced it, right? It's ridiculous. And I'm sharing this on behalf of the taxpayers, not at you.
Nope.
It's ridiculous and it's insane that she's not committing to her, her own timelines that she agreed to, which were already revised. Figure it out. Get it done.
Multiple times. Revised multiple times, yeah.
I mean, if you're pushing solar, if that's your whole business, right? This doesn't look good for solar.
The reason, I can tell you exactly why. The reason is why we don't have this battery capacitor thing, right? It's because the whole factory that made it, she had to change plans on how this was all gonna be arranged, right? And that, in my, is clear, is still not working as she thought it was going to be by this point. That's why we changed the scope and the specs of that whole unit was because it was something that could be sourced readily and we could get it done in these timelines. Well, guess what? Here we are again. Anyway.
No, I completely agree with you.
Yeah.
Alright, we're gonna leave that up now.
Well done.
If we can, I'll try and pivot us out of that. I believe we have a happier topic to talk about. I'm gonna ha- I'm gonna turn things over to Dr. Taylor because, uh, usually curriculum is happy, so we'll.
Why, it's my favorite subject. Um, yes, so I am so excited to, um, talk about this alternative diploma with, um, Sarah. Um, she mentioned it a while ago that her and Jake started to talk about this and I was like, oh my gosh, this is awesome. So I'm gonna invite Sarah to come up. Do you want me to come, Sarah, or do you want Jake to sit with you?
I'm a little nervous to go after that whole situation, but hopefully mine's a little.
Want some yogurt?
It's not cold.
So kind of how this all started, my understanding is that this conversation had started before my stepping into this position and, um, the reason that all these lovely people are behind me is because I've had this conversation with them as well. So in talking with the families and talking with Jake, um, my understanding is that it was kinda talked about, thrown around, but not really put together and presented, um, in a way that was, um, being able to be presented tonight. Um, so I did a lot of research. I know Jake has done a lot of research, um, in looking at, from the state point of view, um, what an alternate diploma is, what the, what the parameters are, um, and how school districts can move forward with adopting that. I communicated with other districts in the state that already have the alternate diploma, so I talked with Milford, I talked with Dover, um, and I talked with Raymond about, you know, what, what do they do and how do they implement it? Um, I was way overthinking it, so, um, they said, no, you just have to do X, Y and Z. And I said, oh, that's way easier than I thought it was gonna be. Um, so, um, thank you to them for being so open and honest with their, um, with how they implement it in their own districts. Um, and then after that conversation, um, I did speak with Sarah and I did speak with Jake, um, shared the information that I have and I said, I really, you know, wanna do this sooner rather than later. Um, it's a fairly simple process, um, so I don't see a reason to delay it until the following school year if we can, um, implement that now. If you go to the next slide. Um, so kind of a little bit of the development plan. Um, so ESSA, um, which is the Every Student Succeeds Act, um, states that all, there are alternate content standards, um, and alternate assessments available, which we have in New Hampshire, uses the DLM, um, and that certain students may earn this alternate diploma. And it encourages school districts to adopt, um, an alternate diploma policy. So the eligibility is actually only three criteria. Um, so the student has to have significant cognitive disabilities, have a current IEP and then participate in the DLM, which is the State Alternate Assessment. Um, and that is all determined by the IEP team. If you wanna go into the like competencies and curriculum, I'll tag on, yeah.
Um, so in looking at the alternative diploma, it's important that we create a bridge for what the general ed, um, student population is doing in those Common Core State Standards and then what these students would be doing to earn that alternative diploma. So we would be working closely together to look at those standards, look at the overall overarching competencies and make sure we have that bridge so that they're being covered in the three main focus areas, which are math, ELA and science. So we have started to develop a plan to work with just the life skills, um, teacher and then there's a bunch of resources that just became, came to our knowledge today, so.
Yes, um, so Sarah and I actually spent the last two days at the, um, assessment and accountability conference up at the state. Um, and I, there was a bunch of different sessions, so the good thing about both of us going is we each got to go to different sessions, um, so we could be able to bring back all of that information, um, to all of you. And I went to two different, um, sessions about the DLM, um, not really expecting that I would get much to add to my presentation tonight, but ended up with, um, a bunch of resources, one of them being an actual map of how to bridge the Common Core State Standards with, um, the learning outcomes of, um, students that are kind of on this different track. Um, so it's kinda already done for me, which I'm kind of excited about. But just seeing how that all aligns, um, is, was really helpful for me to see and to have that visual of, um, and especially for, you know, Jess who would be working on this, to kind of have that curriculum for her, um, outlined and mapped out, um, to be able to, for those students that are on this track. Um, and then for assessment wise, um, again, the New Hampshire uses the DLM, um, which is the alternate assessment, um, to measure yearly student progress. I did ask the other, um, school districts when I spoke with them if they're, they have like, is there a cutoff? Is there a percentage? And they said, no, as long as they're taking it and showing some sort of progress. When they took it the year before, um, that's really kind of all you need. Um, and then just to be able to show that we are addressing those standards. And then against independent standards that align with the, um, with the New Hampshire SAS. They're essentially being assessed on the same thing, just obviously at a, at a different, um, level and, um, where they're at. We're looking at not a huge population of kids. It's, um, when I talked with Milford, she said there's maybe one to two kids per year, so we're not talking, you know, a huge, um, amount of kids. Um, but for me, I think, and for the families behind me, I think it'd be a great way to sort of, um, celebrate those kids that come to school, that have made tremendous progress, whether they're here for, you know, until they're twenty-two or they graduate with everybody. Just a way to honor them and be able to give them a real diploma like everybody else.
Yeah, I'll chime in. The two things that I'm super excited about for this is, one, when I first got here, seeing only one track to graduation and knowing that the student population changes. For me, this is the final piece in, in my high school tracks. Twenty-four credit Campbell diploma, twenty credit state diploma. We have our, uh, diploma of attendance and now we'll have this alternative one. So now every student Campbell has a, has a track that fits in, so that's been super important to me since I got here. The other thing I'm super, uh, excited about is just the collaboration between myself and the Saras. This is something that, last year, I presented and then struggled throughout the year to get footing and we sat down in, in a month and a half and, and we really worked through this. And just what they brought to the table and the collaboration, like, this is what is on, on the cusp for, for the Litchfield School District and for Campbell High School when it comes to our, our SAU working with administration. So I've been super excited about the collaboration that we formed in just this short time, so.
So is the, I just have a question about the, the assessment. Is the DLM, does it mirror the NA, the SAS? Is that it's like a once a year kind of a standardized?
Yep.
Testing?
Yeah, so there's a window, um, just like there is for the New Hampshire SAS. Um, it is computer-based, although you can request paper, um, for certain students if that's a more appropriate way to assess them. Um, and it's the same, it's the same idea. Um, and they're short, they're, um, broken down into like what they call testlets. Just knowing that students that would be taking this Kansas, I mean, the SAS is long, right? And, um, standardized testing is long, so it's broken down into really short, um, components that they can do all in one day. If they have the stamina to do so, they can break it up over several days. It's really, it kinda gives the assessor, um, the flexibility to be able to use it for whatever way would be best for the kid.
And it's great because the IEP team makes those decisions and they know the kids best.
Right.
The parents are part of that team, the te- like, it's just a great way to say like, we know what this kid needs best. Let's develop this assessment. It's gonna help him out.
And just to add on to the, um, information about the DLM, because it is so unique to each student, the window is actually, like this year, it opens in March and closes in early June. So it's a long window to provide students that time that they need to, you know, show what they know, which is awesome.
So is the content tailored to the specific student then?
Yes. Yeah, so they would, um, you know, there's, there's a list and I wish I kind of had all of it available. I literally just got it all this afternoon, so. But kinda shows the different, so how you would have like curriculum maps and everything like that for, you know, regular ed students. It's, it's the same thing. It's called essential elements. So you basically take a standard, you look at like, alright, what's the absolute critical thing that you need out of, that you want the student to get out of it? And then it transfers it to an essential element and then they're assessed or they're taught, um, to that standard. But it's, it's obviously at a much, um, more appropriate level to where the student's, um, abilities are at.
So who's tasked with delivering that?
With delivering the?
The, the content. Is it, is it a special education teacher?
Yes.
Yeah. And so prior to having something like this in place, they were just delivering the normal curriculum or trying their best to deliver the normal curriculum.
I, I think that it's, I think the work that Jess has been doing for the past three years since she's got here has been adapting to students. The only difference is, is that because it's a modified curriculum, there wasn't a diploma other than a diploma of attendance that we could offer them. Now we offer them a diploma that's recognized by the state. We can still modify curriculum. We're assessing them differently than we would assess regular ed students and we can offer them a, a, a recognized diploma from the state.
I see. So we've been modifying the curriculum like this.
Yes.
All along.
Correct.
It's just that, okay.
And now this will also be in Power School and they'll get regular progress updates. And I was really excited actually because, as I said in, in previous board meeting, ESSR funds, you know, we needed to spend them and, Jess actually approached me, um, during one of the opening day things and said, hey, is there any way I can get some resources? So we talked with Sarah and we went through and we got some nice materials that they just came in and it was like Christmas. Um, they have nice nonfiction reading materials. They have, a lot of science, hands-on things to do, um, history. There's a lot of, um, great things that we were able to purchase for that program that will lead right into this, this break.
And so this diploma, I didn't need to add, also counts towards the graduation rate. Um, and then also the families or the IEP team, um, can decide when the student actually. Um, and then also, the families of the IEP team, um, can decide when the student actually graduates, so they can, um, get their diploma with the rest of their class, they can get it upon, you know, turning 22, they can get it at the end of the IEP, so it also, again, has that flexibility for the team to decide when is an appropriate time for them to get that diploma.
I think it's incredible that you guys sought this out and got this done in this amount of time. You know, I, this is what needs to happen. We need to start moving things forward and helping people get to where they need to go, so, great job.
I think we're here tonight to kind of ask for your blessing to continue to move forward with this, because we have to develop now policy and the, everything else to back this up. We didn't want to start to go down that road without you being aware of what we were pursuing here. Um, so in future meetings, you'll see a policy related to this that will, that will be the official approval of this diploma option. We didn't want to spring that on you.
Approved by the state after you have it done, or is it?
So as long as we follow the state model, you know, that, like, we're okay, and that's why they were at that conference today.
It's already been approved, and really the state-
Testing is through the state.
Yeah, and it's through the state, and the state really leaves that ultimate determination, local control, um, and that's why with Sarah's research into other school districts and what kind of policies they have, they actually have the exact same one. So, you know, it makes it, yeah, it makes it really easy for us to be like, okay, like, you know, there's not a lot of hoops to jump through in that regard.
So do you need a formal motion on this, or?
I, uh-
I think to continue to pursue it, and then develop the accompanying policy for eventual review.
I'll make a motion to approve the alternative diploma, uh, path.
Creation for policy.
Creation for policy.
Second.
By Mr. Shoemaker, second by Ms. Ames. Additional discussion?
I just briefly, a- again, it's been said, but I feel like it needs to be repeated. I just want to commend you guys on your collaboration on this. I know this has been something that was brought up to me before I even ran, from some of the ladies hanging out the mama bears. They've been pushing for this, they've been trying to work towards this, and to see it actually, I'm getting goosebumps, to see it actually working, and to see it coming to light is just so amazing, and I know how much time you guys are putting into it, and so if it's even one student that has this alternative path, it's a hundred percent worth it. So yes, I'll be voting yes.
All right, we'll call a question. Uh, we have a motion, the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Thank you again.
Thank you. You guys need to have shirts made, like mama bears or something. All right, I expect more of a show next time. Come on. Some like glittered shirts.
All right, I think we're still on curriculum. Are there any other updates this evening?
Yeah, so just briefly, um, as Tina mentioned earlier, I just, um, wanted to give some committee updates. So, we had our, our first, um, Litchfield Curriculum Committee meeting, um, which was awesome for me, eye-opening, um, in a lot of ways, but, um, very productive, and we have a really clear path forward. Um, I tasked the members to, um, create what they feel like a mission statement would be, because I like to create collaborative, collective mission statements. Um, so everybody is kind of putting together something and sending them to me, and I'm going to put it all together, and we'll have a, um, collective mission statement. Um, and then from there, we're going to share out, um, the vision and purpose of the committee, because that was, um, a clear that it kind of was lost a little bit about what it is that we do. I was confused. Um, as Tina can attest, I kept emailing her, I'm like, Tina, what? You know, so now I'm very clear as to what we're doing. Um, and we have a lot of actionable things happening, um, moving forward, which is great. Um, I just got the third member of my professional learning, um, committee, so I'm going to be reaching out to those folks. There's one rep per building. Um, again, I'm rebranding, so we're going to be rebuilding, um, kind of the purpose and scope of that committee as well, so that will be meeting. And, um, the new and improved, um, Learning Outcomes Task Force, um, that's going to take me a little bit longer to get going, because, um, it really needed a, a lot of overhaul. So, I am almost done. I think I'm on, I have narrowed it down to like four to six phases with action steps for each phase. Um, then I'm going to talk to the administration, show my timeline plan, and then market it to get representatives. I'm hoping to get representatives pre-K to 12 in not only general ed, but special ed as well. Um, Sarah is going to be on that committee, and we've talked a lot about the importance of being cohesive in both, because it's not one or the other, it's all. So, um, we're going to be collaborating a lot with that.
Is that formally grading and reporting?
It was formally grading and reporting.
So we've changed the name?
Yes.
We love to change committees.
We have-
I think I'm on that committee, so I just want to make sure when I see the-
So I thought Heidi was the backup now, so I took him off of it.
I think I was the-
You're grading, and I'm curriculum, I'm like formerly perk, but you're grading and reporting.
So you're on that one. Okay, good to know. I'll make sure you're on those.
Oh yeah, I'm on energy.
So I apologize, Heidi, I wasn't including you on the email.
I saw the email, and I'm like, is math supposed to, but then I, I talked to Tina, and I was the backup for it, so I appreciate getting the email, but, yeah, so we can, we can have a conversation.
So you'll get-
Oh yeah, no, I mean, I, by all means, I don't need any more.
And it's not just a rename, it's a completely different repurpose.
Well, I'm excited to hear that, because I attended two of them, and I was very disappointed but last year, so I-
Yeah.
As you know, this is very important to everyone up here, so.
Yes, yes, me as well. That's why I was like, okay, we're going to start from scratch, so.
Four tomorrow outputs of this newly reorganized committee soon.
Thank you.
Yes. Anything else?
Um, oh, I just really want, quickly, I got an email today. I was very excited. Um, there were some Title I funds left on the table from last year, so we applied for carryover into this year, which is kind of a new process, and it got approved, so all those fun, I was able to get all of the funds that were left on the table from last year added to this year's allocation. So, that was very exciting, because there's no grant funds that will be left on the table, so moving forward, so.
It's like the Trolls movie, instead of no trolls left behind, no dollars left behind.
Yes, no dollars left behind. No, they're all important, and-
So will that be towards materials?
So, um, it's going to go towards, um, some staff, um, so that allocation will actually be, um, redistributed into, um, St. Francis as well, because our equitable, um, share will change a bit from what our original allocation was. Um, so some of it will go to staffing, because I've been in talks with Manchester to hire a, um, their tutor that's already at St. Francis three times a week, full-time, to service Litchfield kids, so we're still in talks with that. Um, and then it will go towards much, much-needed, um, resources for this, the program in district, and we were kind of sweating it out. I was very much sweating it out for being able to really have a nice, robust Title I program this year. At the beginning of the year, when I saw our allocations, I was like, oh. Um, and this will allow us to have a really nice, like, family engagement component, which is a requirement, but I had no dollars for a good one. I was like, a brochure? Um, you know, but now we'll actually be able to get families in and do things like that. So, that was an exciting update that I got today, so.
Very exciting.
Well, thank you for the update this evening. All right, uh, next up is Public Minutes from September 18th. Has everyone had the opportunity to review the minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the September, September 18th.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Shoemaker.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ames. Additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Next up is Policy. Moving into second read.
These are all second read. Um, Policy, we met Monday, Tuesday?
Yeah, I think Monday.
A day this week. I'm not really sure which one it was. Um, so we have some first reads for our next, um, agenda, but we wanted to get these 10 second reads out of the way. Um, so I didn't receive any questions. I don't know if anybody sent any, but I am happy to answer them, if we can.
Any questions on policies? I know I reviewed them in preparation for a meeting last week, so, two weeks ago at this point. All right, I'll make a motion to, here we go, ready?
I'll make a motion to approve, as a second read, ACE procedural safeguards on the basis of handicapped disability, ACF, food and nutrition services, ADB, GBEC, which is a drug-free workplace and drug-free schools, ADC, prohibitions regarding use and possession of tobacco products, e-cigarettes, and e-liquids in and on school facilities and grounds, GBCDR, RG1, criminal history, records, information, internal controls, procedures, IHBA, which is programs for pupils with disabilities, IHBAR1, programs for pupils with disabilities, Section 504, notice of the parents and student rights, JKAA, use of restraints and seclusion, JLDBB, suicide prevention and response, ECAB, access to school grounds and facilities.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Shoemaker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained?
All 10 carry four zero zero.
How do these policy names get created?
They are through NHSBA.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, you can create your own, but that's-
Why, why bother? When they say to amend something, you have to figure out what it is.
Well, as a part of the unit exercise for a policy, there were a few anyways, that we have created on our own, but already aligned to now posted NHSBA policies.
All right, uh, shifting gears once again into facilities update.
So, last month, we were, we somehow got ourselves scheduled to meet three times. I think what happened was because we don't meet on a consistent day, we just, uh, fired away with, uh, with John Bernal, so, uh, we sent him an email, and he gave us a lot of dates. Um, in setting the agenda for last week, or in working on setting the agenda for last week, um, the Citizen Co-Chair, Dan DeWitt, and I realized that we probably could send out a, just an update email to the committee and not drag everyone out to have another meeting. Um, so that's what we, uh, opted to do. So I had set out a meeting, um, just thanking everyone that's been going out and trying to solicit surveys. Um, at that time, we had 291, uh, responses. I think we're up to somewhere in the 320 to 330 range now. Um, it's still a little slow-moving. Um, I did highlight the fact that I really would like to continue to try to reach people that are not connected to the schools. I want to make sure that we're not stuck with a, a biased sample that's all just people that are related to the schools. Um, so in that vein, we are still working on the outreach attempts. Um, we have, uh, I reached out to Kim Kleiner to ask about putting some, we have signs that we had made that have the QR code for the survey, and we asked about putting them in some public locations. Um, I think the majority of them were, ended up being rec properties, so they, they had, she connected us, the rec commission, and they've asked that, um, we come to the October 8th meeting. It's my wife's birthday, and I will come home to an empty house if I go to that, so, uh, Dan has agreed that he will go, uh, which I appreciate. Um, so hopefully we're going to get more of those out there, um, and that, that's, we're just continuing to try to hit as many avenues as we can. Um, and the superintendent ordered the signs for us, so we're, we're in good shape on that. Um, I updated them on the onsite insight in that, as well as, um, requested that they review the general contents of the Turner Report, uh, because Mr. Obless did ask that we do a, take a deep dive into that, and we, you know, as a committee, I want to make sure that the committee is driving where we go, uh, as a whole, and so I asked them to try to familiarize themselves with that, so that we can, um, the committee can determine on a whole whether they want to dive into that further. Um, so, sent that out. Um, so that's just the kind of the update that I provided. Our next meeting's October 10th.
That's good.
Anything else on facilities for the moment? I think we're all just kind of waiting and eager to see the, the results of the survey.
You and me both.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you for the update. Uh, school more comments this evening?
I already said it a bit, but I'll just highlight again the high level of collaboration I'm seeing, um, between the administration, and it is, it's nice. There's just, it's a breath of fresh air, so I'm happy to, I'm happy to see everyone happy, and so, which is nice.
We're new to energy.
Yeah.
Right, and that's continuing.
Yeah, there's a lot of passion, which is great.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, manifest, I think they all have free signatures at this point.
They do.
We're going to close manifest, and we'll move into our second community input this evening. So this is open to any comments the public, the public would like to share with the board tonight. Reagan, anything to say?
She's like, Dad, don't call on me. What are you doing?
I promise I would try to embarrass her, so.
So sorry, honey, oh.
All right, I'll close community input at this point, and, uh, at this point, we're going to close our public meeting and move into non-public session. This is non-public under RSA 91AC. Matters that if discussed in public would likely adverse effect, adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the body agency itself unless such person requests in the meeting. With that, I want to entertain a motion to move into non-public. Second by-
You can give it to Matt. He said it verbally.
Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, that carries four zero zero. We're now moving into non-public. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.